Okay, I will call the Temecula Planning Commission regular meeting of June 5th, 2024 to order. And we will begin with the flag salute. Mr. Solis is going to handle that.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, liberate and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We will do roll call.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Chair LaTrejo.
Here.
And Chairman Hagel.
Here.
And we have one excused absence from Commissioner Watts.
Okay. Do we have any public comments tonight?
We have not received any.
Okay. Then I don't have to do that. Before I get to the consent calendar, I'd just like to make a request of all of my commissioners here. First, regarding managing the meeting, I would like that if a motion, if you want to make a motion, make a request to me to make a motion. I will then make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to speak. And once that's done, then I will have the motions made in the order that they're requested so that we can keep things, you know, going smoothly. The other thing is that it's been reminded to me that we need to make sure that when we're asking questions, that we are only asking questions, not making comments at that time. And also that when we pose a question, the question should be posed as a question and not as a comment or taken as a comment so that we don't get ourselves in trouble. This public hearing tonight, we're going to run a little bit differently because of the complexity of it. So as we get to it, I will go through how we're going to handle it so that it makes it easy for everybody. Because if we dump all this stuff on everybody and have all the questions at once and all the comments at once, it's going to get very complex. So Mark is prepared to go through this in a certain order and we'll handle that then.
Yes. Just as a reminder, we still have to do item one, the consent calendar before.
Okay. So consent calendar, I got to read this. All matters listed under consent calendar considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to Planning Commission at temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So do we have a motion on the minutes?
I saw move.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a first and second. Did you? Okay, you got them. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four to nothing. So next item on the agenda is the director's hearing summary report. It's a receive and file. And do we have any comments related to that, Matt?
It was part of consent, right?
That was part of the consent, but I want to make sure that was clear. There was one motion on the full consent calendar, which included both items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so that's taken care of then. Okay, so we're going to go to the public hearing. And here we go with the reading again. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is to be called for the public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal to the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. Appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So the first item, or the only item, is the long-range planning project number LR23-0429, amending Title IX, which is Public Peace Morals and Welfare, Title XVII, which is zoning in Old Town Temecula Specific Plan, SP Number Five, as detailed in the proposed ordinance and resolution attached as Exhibit As and B. And Mark is going to do a presentation. And what Mark is going to do is present, break down this whole entire thing into segments, and then he'll stop after each segment so we can ask questions so it doesn't get too complex. And then when we do our comments, we'll do the same thing. We'll follow the order that Mark gave us and have comments on each section by section. So Mark?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. As mentioned, this is LR230429, a comprehensive alcohol ordinance. Just kind of start things off, why are we here? Old Town is a success. That's why we're here. Okay. Old Town's evolution. Old Town by design has evolved into a lively dining and entertainment district. And the pandemic brought new challenges and opportunities. The city decided to take them head-on. The city implemented an outdoor dining program for restaurants and merchants to stay open. The city also conducted a quality of life survey, which led to the creation of the Metro Plus team to ensure alcohol and any other incidents like that are handled. Some consequences of the success. These are service calls from RSO, and you see it on the graph there. They peak after 10:00 PM and they kind of hit the high point from midnight to 2:00 AM. And this is from May of 2022 to May of 2023, so they're not the most up-to-date numbers. And then our DUI data for 2023, citywide, we had a total of 376. Forty percent of those occurred during 12:00 AM to 4:00 AM, and 70% had a nexus to Old Town. So they were there at Old Town consuming alcohol at some point during the night. Okay. And in response to these issues, two joint city council and planning commission workshops were held to discuss alcohol and entertainment. The following was the majority direction to staff for future potential policy. Item one, to standardize hours of alcohol sales. Item two, to implement a new ABC license type referred to as the Type 90 or entertainment venues. And then also explore a temporary outdoor live entertainment program specific to Old Town. And this being primarily focused on Old Town, staff's first stop with our proposal was the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, OTLAC. OTLAC consists of seven appointed representatives, representative members from the following stakeholders. We have someone from the chamber, we have someone from Visit Temecula Valley, Old Town Temecula Merchants Association, the Historical Society, a landowner within Old Town, as well as a Temecula resident, and this one happens to be in Old Town as well. We do have a space for a licensed architect, but that seat remains vacant. So all of this went through them first. They were our very first stop. We wanted to get their input on this before anyone. And the presentation format, as previously mentioned, this presentation is broken into three parts with a blank or black slide in between for questions of staff. The first one would be the standardized requirements for alcohol sales, a little more specifically, alcohol sales ending at midnight, and then some additional operational standards for alcohol-serving establishments. Item two will be the Type 90 ABC license or entertainment venue. And then item three will be the temporary outdoor live entertainment. Nice example of our blank slide. So we'll get right into our standardized hours for alcohol sales. With our existing standards, there is no municipal code standard for alcohol services presently. Over time, alcohol sales have evolved, and they have kind of changed as planning commission and city councils have cycled through. This has resulted in inconsistent hours for alcohol sales. Little bit about our existing CUPs. Seventeen of 25 CUPs issued for alcohol within Old Town allow alcohol sales past midnight. So roughly 68% of them allow sales past midnight, and such CUPs will continue to operate without A little bit deeper into the active ABC licenses in Old Town, Type 47s, which are allowed to serve distilled spirits and a bona fide eating establishment, we have 25 of them. Type 42s, which is on-sale beer and wine, no food requirement, we have two of those. And then a beer and wine bona fide eating establishment, we have 14, meaning we have 41 total ABC licenses for onsite consumption in Old Town, with an additional 21 from miscellaneous ABC licenses, caterers permits, farmer's market, things like that. Citywide, we have a total of 380 ABC licenses. This means roughly there is one ABC license per 300 residents. Keep in mind, our goal for RSO is to have one deputy per 1,000 residents, just to kind of put that in perspective. And then a recap from the direction from the majority city council planning commission workshop was alcohol sales moving forward will cease at midnight. Existing businesses with CUPs that allow alcohol sales will continue. As mentioned, we took this to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee on April 25th, that alcohol sales cease at midnight. They were supportive of the proposal. The vote was four to two in favor of midnight. OTLAC members did identify some safety concerns with alcohol sales past midnight, specifically safety, assaults, things like that that occur, as well as noise and parking concerns. This was taken to the city council Old Town Steering Subcommittee on May 14th. Council members were supportive of midnight, knowing that in the future, if they choose, it can be changed. This went to the Planning Commission General Plan Update Subcommittee on May 15th, and they were supportive of the midnight alcohol sales. So our alcohol hours proposal remains unchanged. Alcohol sales moving forward will cease at midnight, and the existing CUPs will continue. Along with this, we did consolidate our alcohol standards. Presently, they're kind of split up between 1710, which is our supplemental development standards, and then 1708, which is our commercial development standard. So we went ahead and created a new chapter, 1709, aptly named alcohol. And this contains all of our alcohol standards for the city outside of specific plans. So staff, in consultation with our professional alcohol consultants, we consolidated the standards and implemented some additional operational requirements based on their experience. We implemented some new documentation requirements, cutoff list, headcount log, things like that. Clarifies video surveillance requirements, defines and prohibits morphing of restaurants into nightclubs after midnight. It requires management security meetings with RSO prior to opening. It prohibits private rooms or VIP areas. And then it requires postings of conditions of approval, both for the city and ABC licenses. And that wraps up our alcohol hours discussion, as well as Chapter 17.09's creation. Do we have any questions specific to this?
Okay. Why don't we start down here? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of quick questions. A lot of discussion about Old Town, but the proposed ordinance is citywide, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then on the last slide there, you indicated some of the operational requirements. Those are tied to the CUP, so I guess trying to figure out what happens if someone is not abiding by those requirements. Is it a tiered system? Is it? How does that look since we're adding new requirements in?
They would be enforced the same as our current standards. If they violate these, our code enforcement or whoever the enforcing agency would head out, and they would issue either a notice of violation or what have you as far as what the infraction caused, a fine depending would follow with that.
Okay, so similar to what's currently in place with limitations on finding and that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir.
It would be the same. Okay, that's my only questions for now.
So just to clarify, maybe I misheard, but I just want to make sure it's clear. These are standards that don't apply just to businesses with CUPs. It is citywide standards for all alcohol uses.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
That was a good clarification. Thank you. Okay, can you go back to the slide with the citywide ABC licenses, please? And tell me again what you were saying as far as the population in Temecula to ABC licenses?
With our current population of right around 111,000, I believe, doing the math, it turned out to be roughly one ABC license per 300 residents.
And then one of the, maybe I can't remember what slide it is, but where it says posting of CUPs and ABC license. Okay, so on that, how is that going to be handled? They'll actually have that posted as you walk in the door? You'll see that?
Yes, ma'am. They'll be posted along with their business license, which is a requirement of the code. Their conditions of approval will have to be physically presented as well and available upon demand by city staff, RSO, or any enforcement agency.
So are you saying as you walk into the business, people will be able to see that?
Yes.
Or is it something that just if people ask to see it, they show it to them?
It will be physically posted on the wall, and then if a copy is requested, it shall be provided.
Okay. And so those businesses that have CUPs now will also have to do that, even though they're not new businesses to CUP, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it has to be physically posted in a conspicuous place, but it doesn't necessarily need to be as you enter the restaurant.
Right. Okay.
And I just want to make sure this part is clear as well. So all the regulations in 1709 apply to all businesses, but those with a CUP, if there's anything in their CUP that conflicts, the CUP would govern. So we can't change things in this ordinance and impose that on a business that has a CUP.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Solis?
I had a question about the Old Town, the survey.
Mm-hmm.
So was this, how was this created? Was this given to like a mass email, or how did it come up with the survey?
The survey was part of the True North Survey, which was a community-wide statistically valid survey. It's kind of the community's report card. We did that before we kicked off the update to the Quality of Life master plan. And some of the feedback we got from that survey, I don't have it in front of me, was specific to Old Town and feelings of safety in the evening and concerns about that. And as a result of that, that led to the creation of the Metro Plus Team.
I think what you're referring to, sir, is the survey in front of you. Yeah. That was created by Brooke Nun of the Chamber of Commerce. She sent out some, she sent out a request on her own behalf to all members of the chamber and provided the survey, and these are the responses from the chamber.
We've done a lot of surveys.
I understand.
And this survey was very recent, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. It was prior to the OTLAC's hearing.
Yeah, as opposed to the other one that we were talking about.
So this was led by the Chamber of Commerce and?
Yes, sir.
Chamber of Commerce was responsible to get business owners to reply to this.
Yes, that was on then. We appreciated it, but we did not ask for it.
Got it. Okay. And I have one more question. There's the universal entertainment license standard, that's that new Type 90, is that what that section is?
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I think that's it.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. My only question, I think everybody seemed to ask, which was all the operational items are for everyone, and that's not just Old Town, that's the entire city. It is if there is a conflict with something in someone's CUP, the CUP rules. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
If it's not in their CUP, then this would apply regardless of whether anything is in their CUP?
Correct.
Okay. Good. I think that will help clear up a lot of things.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Next.
Okay. All right, exciting one. The Type 90. Okay. What is a Type 90? It's a brand-new license that came into effect January of this year, and it allows indoor music venues, specifically indoor entertainment only. It allows alcohol sales to include spirits without food service. Alcohol sales are permitted two hours prior and one hour after performance, and minors are allowed on the premises. And some of the requirements for them to operate, they need to have a professional booking agent, sound engineer, lighting engineer, promoter, stage manager, security. There are several of these listed out in the definition or in the requirements of a Type 90. There also needs to be a defined performance stage and audience areas. And the tickets must be sold and artists paid, not allowed to have free shows. And then to recap, the majority of city council planning commission workshop policy direction was to allow for two Type 90 establishments in Old Town. So the original Type 90 proposal would have been to allow two Type 90 entertainment venues. These would have been permitted by right with a new Class 4 entertainment license. And this Class 4 entertainment license is being created to regulate the entertainment portion. It's an annual license that can be revoked, kind of the reason for it. If we have someone and there's a bad actor, that is much easier to revoke than a conditional use permit or similar entitlement. These will be limited to the downtown core district, and will be limited to establishments with a Type 42 license. Reason for this is they presently serve alcohol, beer and wine, with no food. So they are already an establishment without food. So we think that would be a good transition for them to take up a Type 90. As mentioned previously, we did take this to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee on April 25th. And Old Town Local Advisory Committees were minors on the premises, that's a recurring theme here, parking, noise, and then general overall safety. They did vote to adopt this or to recommend it, and that was a six-o vote. And then the Old Town Steering Committee saw this next, and their concerns were proximity to residents, minors allowed on the premises. And then the city council Old Town Steering Subcommittee wanted to reduce the number of Type 90s from originally wanting to allow two down to one. The reason for this is I've reached out to ABC statewide and some other cities, and this is potentially the first Type 90 ordinance within the state. So the city council wanted to take a more measured approach and reduce it to one, knowing that in the future, if successful, they can expand it from there. Then the Planning Commission General Plan Update Subcommittee saw this May 15th, and there were some concerns as far as DJs and video digital performers. And then also, they were supportive of city council's direction of one versus the two Type 90s. So the original proposal was refined to address the concerns raised by the previous bodies. And this is where we landed on our updated Type 90 proposal. We're going to allow one Type 90 entertainment venue permitted by right, limited to a ABC Type 42 license with a new Class 4 entertainment license. These will be limited in location to the downtown core district of the Old Town Specific Plan. Operational hours will be from, entertainment will end at 11:00 PM. The reason for this is to stay consistent with our alcohol standards ending at midnight. The new ABC license allows alcohol sales two hours prior and one hour after. If we have entertainment cease at midnight, alcohol sales would continue to 1:00 AM inconsistent with direction of the council. So that's why the entertainment ends at 11:00. Also, we're going to allow minors with conditions and selection criteria. Those items in there in blue and italicized are like that because they were not included in the original ordinance submitted in the packet you received. So we're going to go over those quick changes here in the next slide. So regarding the minors, in addition, it was made to address concerns of minors allowed in Type 90 establishments. It's not, we didn't reinvent the wheel here. We're going to be using strap, like the bracelets that you get typically when you go to concerts or any type of nightclub, and they will identify persons over the age of 21. There's some requirements for it. They need to clearly state time and date of the event, so you can't just have red wristbands getting sold. They need to clearly state what it is. They need to be tamper resistant, highly visible or reflective, different colors with a minimum of seven, so a different color each day of the week. And then anyone 21 years of age or younger identified wearing one will be removed from the establishment. And then also, obviously, this does not remove the establishment's requirement to card appropriately for alcoholic beverage sales. And there were two additional additions, forgive me. The findings for a Type 90 entertainment venue were updated. Again, it's a new license type, we're just trying to dial it in to exactly where we need it to be, and these were just the findings for it. And then we're going to include minimum and maximum occupancy for selection of Type 90 and clarify what is deemed first come, first served. And we are on another blank slide.
Okay. Commissioner Solis, you want to start?
No, I think they answered my question.
Okay. Want to go?
Yeah, sure. Could you go to your first slide there? Or maybe it was a second. It talked about the, no, the next one, please. This one. So Type 90 is required to follow and operate professional booking agent, sound engineer, lighting engineer, promoter. You said there's a whole slew of things there. Can one person wear multiple hats?
Yes.
On that? And is that defined within it? Or?
It doesn't clarify, but a person could be, the professional booking agent is also the stage manager, and that would be up to the establishment.
And what comes to, well, I'll save that for comments, I guess, later. So we got that. The proposed change from one to two Type 90 permits, or two to one, I'm sorry. Is it, it's first come, first served on application?
Yes, sir.
Time stamp? I mean, that's just whoever gets in would be the one possible consider for that?
Yes, sir. That was direction.
Okay. And then last question, and I noticed this was also on the 17.09, I believe, as well. But the hours of operation, we've got, you know, alcohol sales to cease at midnight to be consistent. Is there a limit on how long they stay open after? If alcohol sales cease at midnight, can they stay open till two?
No, they would close after the enter, after, actually.
And the reference, and I probably should have caught that on the previous one, too, but the reference in there is hours of operation, alcohol sales to cease at midnight, there's nothing to really address. Does that mean they have to close at a certain particular time? And I didn't know if that was defined.
Currently, no. So it says entertainment operating hours shall be between 7:00 AM and 10:59, 59 PM. So that's the, that's the hours for entertainment. Alcohol sales have to end an hour before then. I'm sorry, alcohol sales can go an hour after, right? So that's why alcohol sales would end at midnight. Presumably, they could stay open, but there's going to be no entertainment, and there's no alcohol service, so people would just be standing around. But presumably, there's, right now, currently in the draft ordinance, there is no required close date for the business.
Okay, so that's up, that's to the business to decide at that point.
Correct.
Okay. I'll save the rest for comments, I guess. So, thank you.
Yeah, that brings up questions. Okay, so the conditions for the minors, so basically, the only condition is that they are not wearing a wristband.
Correct.
And that's how they're going to be, that's how we're going to know. And is, are minors allowed in the actual Type 90 license itself? Is that why we are accepting that?
Yes. State law preempts the city from excluding minors. They are in the language of the bill itself, or I'm sorry, of the license itself, so we are preempted from excluding them.
And then can you talk about the amendment, that last slide? Like what, the amendment to the Type 90?
The?
This Type 90 amendment? No, right there. So you're saying that we are going to do this, we haven't done it yet?
We've done one aspect of it. So if we turn to Section 9.10.125, and I can read in what the proposed language is, if you look at B, application selection process.
What page are you on?
Uh, give me. Give me one second. Sorry, now I have too many screens open. Page three, you're saying?
Oh, I'm on here. This one? Yeah. Okay, gotcha.
Oh, I was looking at the actual ordinance, though. Give me one second.
That's what I thought.
So it's page five of the ordinance. Let me know when everyone's there so we can follow along.
I think I'm on page five of the analysis. Where is the actual ordinance? Right here? Yes. Hold on.
Correct.
This? Okay, I'm here. I'm with you.
Okay. Sorry, now I got lost. Okay, so B, application selection process. Are we all there? Okay. So the proposed changes to that first sentence, it says only one class four entertainment establishment license shall be issued on a first come, first served basis. We're proposing to add the language based on the date the application was received for use requiring a type ninety ABC license. So just to clarify, that it's based on, you know, date that submitted. That's the only change being proposed to that provision. What Mark had mentioned is that there's going to, at a later point in time, also be a proposed change related to occupancy limits. But staff is still in discussions on coming up with appropriate language for that. But the proposal is to include some occupancy limits as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. I do have one question. So you mentioned that it's for one year, right, from the date that they apply? And that's when they, or is it the day that they open up the business?
The class four entertainment license is a one-year permit. The, the date it is submitted would, that would be who, whatever entity gets the first come, first served, that would be that. But it would be good from one year from time of issuance until the following year.
Okay, thank you.
Could you put up the slide regarding the minors again? So E, persons under twenty-one years of age identified wearing a wristband in violation of this chapter shall be removed from the premises. So what that is basically saying is that if the business gave a minor a wristband, making the assumption that they are, they can drink alcohol, then that minor would be removed from the premises?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Would also identify, or also hopefully clear, or clear up some of the issues of an older friend perhaps sliding a wristband off and handing it off, things like that.
Okay, so the, it, the business would be required to move, remove the minor from the premises?
Yes, sir.
What about anybody else involved in getting that minor that wristband?
We can add language.
Then it becomes an investigation, I believe. In, in terms of how the ordinance is written, if someone's caught with a bracelet that isn't twenty-one, they'd be removed.
Yeah.
But if we wanted to take it further, then, you know, it begins an investigation.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think in my head how this would play out with the business removing someone, a minor. I mean, how would you, how would you ask a minor to leave without asking other people to leave that's associated with that minor? And Adam, do you have?
No, but I know this came up in, in the workshop. The definition of minor in this case is under twenty-one, correct?
Correct.
You could be removing someone that's nineteen.
Yeah.
I mean, I get your point if you've got a seven-year-old wearing a wristband.
Well, a seventeen-year-old or something.
But, but I think definition of minor here is under twenty-one, so. I just, for thought.
Okay, I, I think that's, that's good. All right, any other questions? We'll go on to the last item then.
If it helps, this is the shortest. Outdoor live entertainment in Old Town, it was permitted through the early nineties. By the early two thousands, as Old Town grew and kind of developed a little bit more, there were increasing complaints and some of them, substantial amount of them from across the freeway. During this time of growth, an Old Town specific plan amendment was in process. And outdoor entertainment was a concern across the forty-plus meetings held during the specific plan amendment process. For these reasons, outdoor live entertainment in Old Town was limited to once per quarter or quarterly with a temporary use permit. And then recently, there has been a substantial increase in requests for outdoor live entertainment in Old Town greater than what is allowed. A little recap on the majority of the City Council Planning Commission Workshop Policy Direction. It was for staff to research and bring back a proposal for a trial temporary outdoor live entertainment program specific to Old Town. So our proposal would be a pilot program, one year, to allow for temporary outdoor live entertainment in Old Town. It would be permitted through the existing TUP process. The language contains a sunset clause, so if nothing happens, it will cease after one year. And it will be limited to the downtown core district, and the City Council may discontinue, extend, or make permanent at their discretion. As we went over previously, the Old Town Local Advisory Committee was our first stop on April twenty-fifth. The big concern with this one was noise. And after a discussion, the hours of operation for these from ten AM to nine PM satisfied these, their concerns as far as the noise goes, them ceasing so early. City Council Old Town Steering Subcommittee was our next stop on May fourteenth, and they were supportive of the outdoor live entertainment program. Our Planning Commission General Plan Update Subcommittee on May fifteenth was our final stop. And they were supportive of the proposal with some concerns as far as instrument types, DJs, things of that nature. So our outdoor live entertainment proposal with a few guardrails. Our hours of operation are going to be ten AM to nine PM, seven days a week. It's intended to be ancillary to the primary business. We want people to enjoy the music but not be their reason for going to that business. There will be no DJs or percussion instruments, and they will not be allowed during Old Town Front Street closures. Specifically, Santa's Electric Light Parade, the Fourth of July Parade, things like that that shut down Old Town Front Street. All right. Told you that was the last one.
You want to go?
Just to, actually, first one should be pretty easy. You said the one-year kind of pilot program. That's, that's like a calendar year or time set for all people. It's not, you know, I get one year, you, you get one year starting next month or so forth. It's a one-year period, correct?
This ordinance should take effect August eighth, if my math is right. So from August eighth of twenty twenty-four until August eighth of twenty twenty-five, the program will be in effect.
Okay. And then on the, on the last point there, you mentioned the entertainment would be, you know, ancillary to the business, not a reason for. So does that prevent a business from advertising that they've got a well-known musician that's going to not do, you know, that's going to be, be in line with those rules? But hey, make sure you kind of come out. We've got ABC person going to be there. Would that be permitted?
We don't have any language in there for artists as far as anything like that goes, if they want to perhaps draw more of a crowd with a known artist.
I, I would, I would think that would be an advantage for them, but just the, the way you described it there, it sounded like it might be prohibited. So I'm just trying to get some clarification.
No, it's not prohibited. Our intention is to create a, we want ambiance. We want to have some music in the background, whether people are dining, having a beverage, whatever they may be doing in Old Town. And we just want to have some music down there, kind of create a nice ambiance, a little feel. We don't want it to be, we don't want.
It's not a concert.
Exactly. It's background music.
Got a well-known saxophone player. I can promote that all I want and say, hey, come check him out and enjoy some food. Okay. All right, thank you.
I forgot my question, but I'm still. Yeah, come back to me.
Go ahead, Commissioner Solis.
So this, this last one, multiple, it's not limited to just one, one business. Maybe ten restaurants can all have it all for one year. And then they would go, my question is, do they go back to the committee where it gets approved again? Or is it, or is this a pilot program just for one year?
It's a pilot program for one year. The City Council, at any time during that year, they can, if it turns out poorly, they can shut it down. If it is going off very well, they can extend it, or they can make it permanent based on their discretion.
I also recall we discussed street, like entertainment, like a musician on, on the street. Is this the same or?
No. This is specific for businesses. An established business, there, any business in Old Town in the downtown core district can apply for one of these TUPs, and it will be valid for one year. Specific to the property and all functions of the entertainment must occur on the developed property.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
You have some? Okay, good.
I remembered. So specifically, what were the Old Town Local Advisory Committee? I don't like OTLAC. It reminds me of AFLAC, the duck. I'm having a hard time with that. We got to figure something else out. Anyway. What were their specific concerns about the outdoor live? I know you said noise, parking. I just kind of want to hear that a little bit more.
There were some concerns with parking. They, we brought this up. We, they didn't have an idea of what we were discussing.
Can you go back to that slide while you're talking? Then I can see.
This is the OTLAC's vote for outdoor live entertainment. There were some concerns with safety. Our resident down there specifically had some concerns with noise. After we presented the details of the program, the entertainment ceasing at nine PM, it being ancillary. These were, their concerns were put to rest.
What were their safety concerns?
Safety concerns, they thought this would be running late till midnight or two AM, something like that, so that would have just exacerbated their existing concerns for alcohol around.
So the hours kind of helped with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And then TUP is temporary?
Use permit.
Use permit.
And those are hundred percent, they are revocable.
Right. And then, and so any business who wants to do this as an ancillary part of their business needs to have a TUP.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When you say yes, ma'am, it makes me feel really old.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uncle Sam beat it into me, and they're much scarier.
Okay, all right.
So you showed the, the events where someone could not, not do this. So like Santa's, the, you know, the Christmas parade and, and so on and so forth. What about other events or other, well, other events the city would have? For instance, the concert series this year, I believe, is going to be in Old Town.
It is.
And there may be other kinds of events. So there could be a conflict, and my, my bet would be that if they're following this ordinance, they're going to be, they're going to, their music's going to be relatively quiet. It might be the city's event that is conflicting with their event. Well, with their, you know, their right to have entertainment outside. I mean, if we had a concert out here, and it's not going to be quiet. It's just, you know, that's just the nature of those concerts, that it could conflict with a permit that someone has paid for and gotten and, and create, you know, an issue. Now, the issue is not necessarily between one restaurant and another. It could be between the restaurant and the city. And it may just be something that we need to think about or.
That's what we'll figure out through the pilot program.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That was my only question was. So anything else?
I have a couple more slides to get through.
Okay, go ahead.
So for our sequoia determination, staff has determined that these projects are exempt from further environmental review per SEQUA guideline, section one five zero six one B three. And staff's recommendation is for the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution recommending the City Council adopt the ordinance. Two, adopt a resolution recommending the City Council adopt a resolution amending the Old Town specific plan, amendment number eleven. And three, find the projects exempt from further environmental review per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQUA, section one five zero six one B three. This completes my presentation. I'm available for any additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. That was very thorough. Do we have any public comments?
We have none.
None?
Oh, hold on one moment.
Yeah, just bring it up. Okay, if you'd like to go ahead, so you don't have to go.
No, being malaria.
So I'm going to open up the public hearing, so please go ahead. Yeah, sorry. Welcome. Thank you.
I'm a business owner down the street, and I just saw that the pilot program for the class ninety was limited to Old Town. And I spoke with, I was speaking with Eric Jones, who helped me get my other permits. And he said that it was going to, Old Town ends at Rancho Cal. That's considered Old Town and then on. I just opened my business, and I was wondering if there's any way that I could be grandfathered into this. I'm just down the street from Rancho Cal, actually, within one minute. I do have a restaurant, and it does have a beer and wine license at the time. And do, we do offer live events, actual concerts. We have a class three entertainment license right now that we worked really hard to get to. I think I was the first one to receive that one from Eric. And I was wondering if, if there's any way that I could be grandfathered into this class ninety program. And like I said, I'm just down the street from Rancho Cal.
Where, where specifically is your business?
It's on, it's next to Bastard's Canteen. It's in that area next to, by Don, John Henderson's gym.
John Jefferson.
It's on Jefferson, just right here.
What's the name of your business?
Salud Lounge.
That's something that we can't answer right here, but something that staff will, will take a look at.
You can reach out to Eric. We'll help you tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate you guys.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
We have no further.
Anybody else want to speak? Nope, okay. Don't want to forget you all, so. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, okay, go ahead. I'll open the public hearing.
Only, only two licenses will be given so far?
Only one.
Only one, so first come, first served, pretty much. Okay, thank you.
So ordinarily, we don't, as you know, do question and answer, but I just want to, just to clarify the record so that anyone who's listening also is aware. The temporary program is for the outdoor live entertainment in Old Town. So that is different from the type ninety license regulations. And I know we covered a lot tonight, so it got, it could get a little confusing. So the type ninety is going to be just one license that's issued, and you have to meet certain criteria, which includes having a type forty-two ABC license. That is an ABC license where it's not a restaurant. That's typically our type forty-seven licenses. So that is the criteria for obtaining a type ninety license. And that's just one temporary use permit for outdoor live entertainment. That's open to every business within the Old Town Downtown District Court. Is that what it's called? The District Court, thank you. And that's for that one-year period ending August fifth twenty, I'm sorry, August eighth, twenty twenty-five. That's the pilot program.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay, good, because it's confusing for us as well, so. Okay, so the public hearing is closed, and we're ready for discussion. I'd like to have the discussion one item at a time, so it will go back. If you could put up the first slide for the, or one of the slides for the first, first item and remind us about the alcohol closing issue and. Okay, Commissioner Solis?
Sorry.
Okay.
Well, I know we discussed all this multiple times, and based on the survey that I received and maybe the businesses that came and spoke, I think, I think the ordinance is, is going the right path. And if we see something change, maybe in the future, we can, we can change something up.
Okay.
So yeah, a couple of things, I do wanna thank Brooke or whoever at the chamber organized the survey because this is, it's very telling. I've been conflicted since the first workshop on, on really what to do with the hours and only for continuity, you know? And I think some of the operational things here cover some of those concerns, like posting of the, the C U P and some of that kinda stuff. Because it's still kinda pinpointed on, well, you get to stay open till two, you get to stay open till one, we, we still have that. But I also realize it's gotta be fixed somewhere, you know, and, and looking at this, you know, for future development and, and businesses in town. I hate to see a business being in a position where they're, they're losing opportunity on anything. But the slides that we got from R S O and, and this in particular, survey here of, of the businesses down there is extremely telling. And I, and I know when we had the workshop, there was a lot of, that initial discussion was, okay, cool, maybe, maybe midnight would work. And then it was like, ah, are, are we not, and kind of going back and forth. But given the, the operation regulations and requirements and some of those postings, I'm, I'm definitely more, more aligning with adopting the ordinance as presented.
Uh, yeah, I think it's been great to get feedback from the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. You know, that's kind of, that's why they were created. And they all have some ownership here in Old Town in one way or the other. So I think, and I also agree with Adam with this survey is, I think, is important. And I, there are a couple of things that stood out to me from what people said. You know, this business owner with three offices in Old Town. And, you know, he's like, I have a permanent resolution for you, you know? No drinks are served after ten o'clock and checkpoints at midnight. And, you know, so obviously, there's people who are seeing that as a problem, right? That it's like, and then the next one, enforce current regulations, unauthorized nightclubs, you know, closing down type forty-seven restaurants for the evening that stopped serving food early and turning into clubs. And this has been, this has been a concern of the city for a long time. So it's, I, I think what I'm saying is it's good to hear from people who are actually down here that are businesses, right? And, and maybe we're thinking, oh, the business wants to stay open and wants to, you know, and it's hurting from this. But actually, it seems like safety is a big issue. And, and that should be our number one priority in the city, period. And so, you know, I have supported this before, continue to support it. So I think this has been good feedback to support that tonight.
Can I add something?
Go ahead.
The only other thing I wanted to kind of figure out, which I brought up before, and, and, I mean, I do appreciate your comments. I mean, we, we talked all along that what we want is a safe community, that we want a fun community and everyone defines that differently. We've got different ages, different genres, different interests, but I think at the end of the day, the public safety speaks volumes and what we're trying to accomplish. I did, I did wanna go on record saying that. But, but I, I, I do wonder, and I was trying to look here in the ordinance to see if it was defined. We've defined, or this ordinance would define ceasing alcohol sales at midnight, but it doesn't define closing.
Yeah.
And, and is that something that we should be looking at? I, I, I don't know, I, I'd hate to be, I know we're talking about trying to prevent, you know, drunk drivers and that kinda stuff. I, I mean, are we, hey, it's eleven fifty-nine, here's your, here's your last drink, okay, we're closed, get out? That doesn't seem right to do, but if they're gonna stay open later, and I know there's some entertainment things, I looked at it. I, I, I just, I don't know that we've thought that out or had that discussion, and I wanna make sure that we don't miss something in there before we.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think that, because, you know, those C U Ps that are open, right, until two, we've closed it down at one thirty with alcohol sales, right? So it's kinda like, if we're closing at midnight, are we closing at midnight? Are we stopping to serve alcohol at midnight, right? It's like.
Well, and I guess a way to look at that would be, you know, are, are we, do we want that cool off? That's not the right word, but you know what, like if there, if there's a cutoff period and then you're here before the business, I mean, I guess anybody can leave at any time.
Right.
You know, but are we gonna say that if your alcohol sales go till midnight, you have to stay open till one? Or they have to, alcohol sales cease one hour prior to close, but no later than midnight? Do we wanna look at doing something like that? But, but again, nothing prevents someone from having an alcoholic drink at eleven and walking out. I mean, so it's, it's hard to do, though, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not missing something that becomes a loophole down the road.
Right.
I think that you'd find that, you know, if alcohol sales stops at midnight, someone served, you know, a drink, say, at eleven fifty-five, and they're with a group of people, they're gonna sit and chat for another twenty minutes, half hour, maybe even up to an hour. And that it would be not unusual for when a business stops serving alcohol to at least be open for a half hour to allow people to, you know, chat. And, I mean, they don't have to have a drink to chat either, so.
Right, and, and I'm more in favor of that, I guess, is what I'm saying. I just wanna make sure that it doesn't appear that alcohol in your business ceases at midnight.
Right, yeah.
That, you know, that, I think that, that's more the side that I'm, I'm not, I'm worried less about. If you wanna stay open till one or one thirty, that, that's on you, but I wanna make sure that it's clear that alcohol sales cease at midnight, but the business doesn't have to.
So are you suggesting that maybe we say somewhere in this that business, you know, we're not requiring your business to close at this time? That there's, there's no, no timeframe that your business has to close, other than, I don't know, there's any state.
Is that a question?
So, we do actually have a provision addressing last call, and I'm trying to find the section. It's seventeen point zero nine point zero six zero B, I've gotta scroll down.
Can you read that section?
Yeah, I'm looking for it, I'm sorry. I was, I went back up to see what, what page, what, so it's B seven, B one. Well, I'll just read the whole section seven, availability of alcohol service.
Page twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. A B C licensed businesses open past ten P M, Pacific Standard Time shall adhere to the following. An hour before closing, limit the sale of alcohol products to items containing one alcohol surin. Point six zero ounces of pure ethanol or less and limit the page trim to one alcoholic drink per order. And then B, this is a section that I wanted to bring to your attention, thirty minutes before closing, new alcohol service shall cease. Last call shall be made early enough to ensure service ceases prior to closing.
I think that's pretty clear, I think it is confusing, though, a little bit in how it's written. So I think if we can clarify that somehow, because it's like, we stop serving at, at eleven fifty-nine P M.
Or give an example?
Right?
You can delegate that to us and we could put in the staff report to the city council that that was brought up as an issue. And we could engage our alcohol consultant prior to going to council.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a great point. Cuz I think it's clear right here, I just don't think it's clear in our ordinance.
Linay would.
Well, that was, that section was in the ordinance, but I think what you're, what you're saying is to combine this section with the other section just so it's all together in one section, so that people understand.
So not clear in the presentation, I think is my point.
Okay, we can.
It needs to be in the presentation, this part in the presentation. Because we're saying, we're, we're saying specifically what these hours are, especially for a, a class four, right, entertainment. We're talking about those hours specifically with the type ninety. Like, you, you know, you stop the entertainment at ten fifty-nine, you stop the alcohol at eleven fifty-nine. So I think that's where it's kinda like, like when you brought that up, I was like, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So somehow, like you said, it is in the ordinance, so that's good. But I think in the presentation, it needs to be part of that, so that it's more clear for them. Like, it would have been more clear for us, I guess.
We appreciate that and we will, can certainly incorporate it into the presentation. We can also look at the ordinance again to see if there's any way to further clarify that and kinda tie it together.
That'd be great.
So we'll take a look at that.
Okay, okay, we all good?
We're good.
Okay, let's go on to the next, next one. You wanna just throw a slide up there, we can get us going. Okay, start down here, Commissioner Solis?
Temporary life.
Type ninety is the next topic.
Type ninety, yeah.
Okay, good, it erased. So the, I just wanna, I had one question about the type ninety, just to clarify before I make my comment. So there's only one type ninety allowed in the core, and how many are allowed in the full city? Is it still just one?
It's one in the core only, none anywhere else in the city.
None anywhere else, okay. Well, I think since it's a new, it's a new kinda program or kind of new license, I think it would be a great idea to explore it in the downtown core and, and then we can go from there. So I think it's a really good idea, we're not shutting it down, but we're exploring, you could say, in the right, in the right place. And maybe within the year, then we can explore it in other places if it's successful.
Uh, am I next?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so Gary and I were on that subcommittee and I know that that suggestion came from the city council subcommittee to, to go down to one. And we really felt good about that, just kinda like what Mark was saying, that this is the first one in the state. Wow, so maybe we should start with one, right? And make sure this is kinda what we wanna see in our city and see how it goes. And I think it's going to matter, you know, what type of business does that type ninety. So I think that's a big deal, so anyway, I think it's good that we're, I'm supportive of starting with one.
So that's the only thing, I did have questions, I, I know that possibly the first in the state, that's kinda big, we do wanna see what, what's going on. It wasn't defined that there would be only one for a certain period of time, or was it defined?
It just says one and there's, I mean, the council at any point in time can come back and initiate a change.
If one's working and it's working well and a couple other cities have gone it, we see that, hey, this is doing good. Then in six months, it could be revisited to add another type ninety, potentially?
Yeah, and that was part of the discussion, let's start with one, let's see how it goes, let's monitor the rest of the state. And if we decide to open it up and add others later, we can do that.
Okay, and that makes me feel a little better, so I wanted to get some clarification on that. Cuz I don't, I didn't want it to be a dark period where, you know, hey, you missed it by two minutes or, you know, you, someone, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to envision how this first come, first served, I don't think there's gonna be a gigantic influx, maybe I'm wrong. Uh, I could think of a couple that are probably interested in it in particular, but I just wanna make sure that that person that missed wasn't then permanently blocked. If it, if it succeeds the way we think it can, the way I think it can succeed. And if we are kinda monitoring some other cities and see that, you know, it is working well and we have another applicant have that opportunity. So because of that, it's a little bit more palatable for me, you know, but, and I, and I respect of, of the groups that, that came with it. I would have been okay with two, just for the record.
Well, I think the, given that we can always make a change, you know, the city can make that change is, is good. And that I would typically say we'd like to walk before we run, but I think in this case, we'd like to crawl before we walk. Because it is new and, I mean, it's not only looking at any other city, what their experience is with a type ninety, but I think it's also us as a city looking at the type ninety that we have and what experience we have and what problems they may have run into and, and, and getting, getting enough feedback that we can, you know, take it forward for mayor without committing ourselves too large.
Well, and I do agree, I think it is, you know, very much like most of, anyway, we have a business specific, you know? And I think on the initial presentation at the workshop, it, it seemed like it was a loophole and could be a very bad thing. And then I think after some more discussion and thought process, it was like, well, I can see how this would apply and, you know, who would apply to. Even with, even the discussion around minors, I get it, but a minor can go to a restaurant and have entertainment and alcohol, I mean, it's, it's there. So I do think it is very business, you know, dependent a little bit too, on, on how we do it and, and what we're looking at. I just wanna make sure that if there is two fantastic businesses, that that person's not locked out for a particular amount of time, if, if it's always open.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll go on to the number three. So this is the temporary one-year program for live entertainment outside. Do you wanna start?
Again, I think having the Old Town Local Advisory Committee and also having this survey kind of helps us with this particular. I know this was kind of a big, kind of a push from Stu in particular, that he had had, you know, he's a music guy and he, you know, he has kind of that idea of what he pictures. And we picture that too, we're just hoping that's the picture we have. You know, the ambiance and not taking over and having businesses competing with each other and that whole thing. So I think it's gonna be tricky, to be honest. But a pilot program is what it is, a pilot program, you know, let's see what happens. I think that's gonna be telling, you know, whether we continue it or not. And, and then we can say, hey, we looked at this and this is not gonna be a good thing. Or we looked at this and, yeah, that might work, you know, let's try it another year. So I think definitely this should be a pilot program and not a for sure thing, for sure. For sure, I said for sure twice, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree, I, I love the idea, I mean, I, I think it could really bring a whole, you know, maybe even a different crowd, different vibe, I, you know, of what we're looking here in Old Town, so I really do like that. One, one point, a couple points of clarification that I wanted to get, this is outdoor, right? It's not anything to do with what a business is doing indoor, correct?
Correct.
And then how would, what, what would happen in the case of, you know, I'm, I'm a business, I'm right next door to Linay's business, my music is at one level, Linay's musics, I feel is drowning mine out. And I, I know you talked about some levels in there, but can we just be clear on how that, how, how that situation would handle itself?
All businesses are required to abide by the city's noise ordinance. If there's an issue with the noise ordinance, code enforcement would come out and measure and issue a citation if warranted.
Okay, so, but if, if the noise ordinance is X amount and we're just happen to be back-to-back patios competing, that, that's maybe what Linay was referring to, that might, might be a little, a little troublesome.
What you're bringing up is exactly what we discussed. So we're just gonna have to see and the message is going to be that the business owners need to figure it out, they need to work it out.
And that, that's all I was just gonna say officially on record. I, I would hope that the businesses down there understand what they're trying to accomplish here and fighting with each other or breaking the rules or not, not following the ordinance is only gonna create the, the deletion of the pilot program. So find a way to work together if this appeals to you, you know, talk to each other, whatever, whatever needs to be done. Cuz I, I do think this could be a, a very nice addition to what's going on in Old Town. I do also agree with, with the chair's concern, if, if the city is doing something that would drown them out, we wanna be considered of that because they have worked or paid and abiding by that. So I do want, I would like to see that considered, but I, I like the idea.
And if I could just make one point, this does apply to outdoors, but I just wanna clarify that a provision in the proposed change, in the, in the proposed changes to the specific plan states, establishments permitted for indoor live entertainment shall be subject to these requirements if the establishment opens doors, windows, or other means for the transmission of entertainment outdoors. So while it's an outdoor ordinance, if there, you know, have someone standing at the doorway with the door open, it's gonna be transmitting noise outside and therefore they would also be subject to these requirements and need to come get a T U P from the city.
Okay, so doors and windows, right? I've got a patio, I won't use names, but I got, I got a patio, they got someone inside, but if their windows and doors are open, they're subject to the same requirements of the T U P?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Solis?
I think it's a great idea. It's a pilot program, can allow the businesses, to allow them to come up with something. So they're gonna transform downtown just like they transformed it before, so allow the businesses is a great idea. Let them do something for a year and then we'll go from there. So I, I'm, I'm excited to see what happens. I think one business already has it kinda there. And it's great, so, let's see.
Okay, so you brought up the, the open door, open window issue. So someone has someone playing inside, they decide they wanna open up, they do have a, an area outside to eat and drink. They open up the windows and doors, which do they fall under then? Do they, would they fall under the outside entertainment?
When they open the windows to transmit the sound outside. When they open the windows to transmit the sound outside, they would become subject to this temporary use permit.
Okay, so then a business that is presently entertaining inside decides, oh, we can just open up our doors and windows, they would need to get a permit, a temporary use permit for that.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. The only other comment I have is, I would like to see a reference in the, uh, in this ordinance related to the sound ordinance. Um, since it's separate, in a separate place, people may forget about it, I think if we just reference that, it is, you know, that this is subject to ordinance blah, 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 that, um, they are on notice that something could happen if, uh, if it gets loud, so.
So, can I say something? Um, how, how are the businesses going to be informed of this?
Uh, we have our public hearing process that we're doing here, and then, um, we would do a posting on the website, letting everyone know that it's coming out, the application is live.
And we've already begun our research, um, with the OTLAC, the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, and Julie Noah, the chair, is, uh, the president of the Old Town Merchants' Association, so she's already begun talking to everybody.
Okay, cause that would be, you know, we would want that to be clear for them, like they know, oh gosh, I opened my windows and my doors, okay?
They're gonna find out very quick.
Okay, okay, just wanna make sure.
I think you're saying in a fairness, the situation though, right?
Yes.
If, make sure the businesses are aware that should they open their doors and windows, they are subject now to requirement of the TUP.
The TUP, yeah.
And I think you want that clarity, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think that needs to be really clear for them. We don't want it, people upset by that, right? I mean, we want, we wanna do a pilot program, but we want it to be fair to the businesses.
Yeah, we want it to be a positive thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, are we, are we all talked out?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's entertain a motion here. Yeah, absolutely.
You told me I needed to ask, so I'm asking.
Absolutely.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to, um, accept the recommendation from staff. Can you put those three up there, or do I need to say what they are?
Yes, and so if you wanna take all, all together, so both together, can I just clarify for the record, cause there were some proposed revisions that were-
Yeah, please.
-recommended. So, um, if we can maybe get the recommendation up, Mark, if possible? Oh, the actual recommendation, but I mean, we can do that, you know, that, that one works as well, I can, I can work off of, no worries.
Wow, I'm getting dizzy.
Um, so let me just pull up the recommendation. It was, um, the sequafinding was one of them, and then the second was related, yeah, I'm trying to find the last, trying to off of memory, but, um, the second dealt with, uh, the Planning Commission Resolution recommending adoption of the Alcohol Regulation Ordinance. Um, and so for that one, there was gonna be a change to section nine point ten, point one, two, five, B one, to clarify that al-, um, the application would be on a first come, first served basis, I had previously read that language into the record. Um, in addition, there was gonna be this new C four, uh, regarding alcohol sales identification, and that's the language that's up on the screen right now. So those were the two changes that I heard with respect to that ordinance. Um, with respect to the Old Town Specific Plan Amendment, there was a recommendation that there be a change made to, um, uh, page three dash nineteen, um, under P, Temporary Use Permits for Outdoor Live Entertainment, to add a new, uh, subsection X, that reads that businesses shall be subject to chapter nine point two O, uh, the city's noise ordinance.
Bob?
Correct.
Okay. So, would it be simpler to take the three of them separately? Would that be better, do you think?
If you're all, uh, fine with doing it all together, based on what I read, we could do it that way, or you can divide it up, it's entirely up to you.
Why don't we do it one at a time? Let's do it one at a time, and then it's super clear.
I, in that case, it's just really the first two, because number three is the sequafinding would go, you know, each one would have its sequafinding.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, let, is everyone, well, I'm gonna make a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not gonna ask if you're okay, I'm gonna make a motion. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt the ordinance with the amendment.
The two amendments that I spoke about.
With the two amendments.
We, we also, do I need a second first? Do I need a second?
We need to get a second, or if you wanna ask if you can make a friendly amendment.
I, I, just looking for clarification, if it needs to be within the motion, or if staff has the direction about the presentation of the hours that we had, some clarification on that, does that need to be part of the motion? Or is that included with the amendment?
Oh, with the additional recommendation, okay, we can add that as well. So, it's, thank you for the clarification. So, we, the motion is to approve staff's recommendation to adopt the ordinance with the change to section nine point ten, point one, two, five, B one, regarding the first come, first served basis, as well as the new C four regarding the alcohol sales identification, and to include a recommendation that staff clarify the language regarding the last call. And so we'll be looking, yes.
Okay, that is my motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have a first from Turley Trio, a second from Adam Ruiz.
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 We have it right here. Adam wrote that.
Do we have a vote here? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, no?
Okay.
There's no nays.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the second motion. Can we put it up on the screen? This'll help me out a little bit. I don't know why it keeps leaving. Stay, stay. Okay. I make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt a resolution, amending the Old Town Specific Plan Amendment number eleven.
With, with the change to add that the businesses will be subject to chapter nine point two, the noise ordinance.
Okay. That's my motion.
I second.
You want a second?
Yep.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Solis. All in favor?
Aye.
Four oh.
And both of those motions include the sequa, number three.
That's part of the staff's recommendation. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. So we have a, do we need a third? Then we're, we're done. Okay. Thank God. Okay, we'll go on to commissioner reports. Anybody have anything?
Nothing this evening.
Uh, I just would like to make a comment on the state of the city. I've been to a lot of those, and I will have to say, that was the best one I have been to. It was maybe because I like history, and, um, yeah, I just liked, um, the feel of it with kind of our past, our present, and our future. So, I just wanted to thank city staff that I know has a lot to do with that, also the chamber, of course, and Stu. So I thought it was really excellent, and, and we appreciate having a table up towards the front, that was kinda nice. We didn't see Adam, that's okay, I know he's doing his thing. Um, anyway, so thank you very much to everybody who made that happen, and I thought it was worthwhile. The only comment I have, and, if I was up there as mayor, this is what I would do. If there was a way to get people to the state of the city that are just people in our city, that are citizens, not necessarily businesses, I know, it's money, but I feel like if there was a way that we could do that, I feel like that would be really valuable, because I feel like what happens in the state of the city, a lot of people are there, already know the state of the city, right? We get all those reports, we know about all that, not that we shouldn't be there, but I think it would be great to have some of the public there that, that need to hear what the state of the city is. And I know, it's a cost.
I know, but I was just gonna say, this was also the first time that I can remember it was being streamed, so residents could watch it.
Yeah. Are they watching it?
I, I don't know, but it was, it was always promoted that way. I mean, it is a cost, and the events are expensive to do, and that's part of that challenge, and-
Right, right.
But it is the first time it was streamed, so I didn't, that was really good to note also.
So just to put that out there, Matt, like, share that with, with the, with the powers that be.
I can share with, uh, economic development.
Yeah.
In the city manager's office, they spend a lot of time.
If there's a way to bring the people in, yeah, that's great that it's streaming, that's awesome. But, somehow, I don't know, even if, I don't know, I just feel like there's other people that need to hear what the state of the city is, not just the leaders, and not just leaders of other cities. They know, they know what the state of the city is. I mean, yeah, we see some new things, but, I don't know, that just kept coming to me that morning, that I would love to see people there who just wanna know what their city's like, really, you know, so, yeah.
I, I would agree, I, this was my twenty-first state of the city, and, um, there were some really, really good ones, I mean, there's some great ones, but what I really appreciated was something that you said about our history. Um, looking back and seeing where we came from to what we are today is, is pretty overwhelming. I mean, the amount of ground that we've covered in a very short period of time is, is really amazing. Um, and I, recently, over the weekend, had opportunity to, um, chat with some people from Orange County that, uh, used to work out here, and we were talking about the growth of the city, and they were blown away by the progress that the city has made. And I, you know, had got to, got to proudly tell them that, by the way, um, all those things that you now see coming out here, they're all paid for, the city, city has no debt. And, you know, I don't know if there's any other major city in the nation that could say that, but, uh, they were really, really surprised that we could do all this and, and still have, uh, be at a place where we don't have any debt, so.
Can I add one thing to that? Yeah, I walked out of it with Jennifer Hennessy, and I just told her, I said, you know, for me, the most important part of this city is, number one, safety, and number two, that we are conservative fiscally. And, I mean, who can say that they've paved that down? Like, that is awesome. And so I think, how many people in our city know that? Yes, we have a website, we have all these things, and we think that it gets out to everybody, I guarantee you, it does not. We have to figure out a way to get that message out to the people here, because, man, that's, those two things are unbelievable, this city. Like, there's, there has to not be another city like that. I don't think there is. And we live here, we are so grateful.
Bernina?
Yeah, I'd like to say also, that was my second time going, it was a great experience, I, I always liked, but it's very informational, because there's so much information there that I didn't even know. That was the new parks, everything opening up, they show pictures, they, so, I agree that some business owners maybe should be invited, can't invite everyone, right? But maybe we can invite some of the bigger, um, businesses that, I mean, I, I don't know who's invited, but I think it'd be a great opportunity for their business to also see and meet other, other, maybe community leaders, or, uh, cities, or council members, I think there was council members from other cities too, so, I think it'll be a great opportunity for other business owners too, so, that's it. But it was a great event.
So now it's time for our new director to do the community development report.
No pressure. Um, I just wanted to start by saying I agree with many of your comments on state of the city. Um, you know, I talked to Stuart, talked to Mark, Denise. You know, day to day, we don't lift our head up to kinda take a look around at what we've accomplished, and this is an opportunity for us to kinda look back at what we've done over the last several years, or the last year, and it's always a good reset for us, and we always leave there inspired, quite honestly. I think we just do an amazing job with state of the, the city, and sort of created a monster, like every year, it's hard to match or even exceed what was done the year prior, so, um, between the mayors and economic development, they do a great job, so, definitely agree. Also wanna compliment the Planning Commission on your organization dealing with tonight's items. So, lots going on there, and say thank you to Mark corralling this item, and taking it from the joint workshops to, through the various committees, and then Planning Commission and City Council next month, so, it's been a big project. And that's all I have for tonight.
Yes, so thank you, Mark, it's, uh, it's been quite a trip.
Can I, can I say one more thing real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I know it's been said before, let's keep having these joint meetings, though, for other topics, or even if it's just updates or anything. I, I think this was successful in, in getting done, and we'll see how it goes through, but I hope this opens a door for more opportunities to have these kinda discussions.
We, I see we don't have anyone from Public Works tonight, so, um, the last thing, I guess, was there any subcommittee meetings? No? Okay. Matt?
Sorry, just, look, looking ahead at the calendar, our next meeting is June nineteenth, but we will be off July third for the summer break. So if you're planning anything, I just wanted to let you know about that.
I'm gonna go away. We do have a meeting June nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
That's Juneteenth.
So I will adjourn to June nineteenth, then.
That's June eighth.
So, that's right, yeah. So, July third, though, we don't.